Now that Councilman Hypes has been seated, I'll welcome you all to the Alpharetta City Council Meeting this evening.
The bus has heavy tires.
For the City Council Meeting and Public Hearing of November 3, 2025. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Note for the record that all members of council are present accounted for except for Councilman Brady. I'm not sure whether he'll make it today or not. I haven't heard that he would not, so he may have just gotten stuck in traffic for all I know at this point. The rest of us are here, and if you've never been here before, just want to let you know that we always begin our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. So if you're willing and able, please stand and join us.
Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first item up on our agenda this evening is the appointment and swearing-in of Recreation Board Member by me, Mayor Gilvin. And I wanted to announce that I'll be appointing Mr. Percy Lidback to the Recreation Board Commission. So now that that's official, if Mr. Lidback would be willing to meet me out front, we'll actually get you sworn in here. Appreciate your service to our community in the past.
Thank you.
Appreciate you assuming this new role. So for those of you that aren't familiar, the City of Alpharetta has over 450 employees that have done this work throughout this whole city to make it the city that we enjoy the best. But we also have hundreds of volunteers that are on boards and commissions that spend their time to help support without any compensation, but they volunteered their time and power, and we're very grateful for their contribution. Mr. Lidback will be joining us on our Recreation Commission. So the parks, the sports, and all the events that we have, it's a very important role, and we're grateful for your service. So we have to actually swear you in here.
Okay.
So what I'll do is I'll read through part of it, and then you read through yours. I find it's easier if you have a copy in front of you. So the Oath of Office.
Oath of Office, the Recreation Board of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. I, Percy Lidback, hereby accept the honor of serving as a board member of the Recreation Board of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia.
I, Percy Lidback, hereby accept the honor of serving as a board member of the Recreation Board of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that.
I do solemnly swear and affirm that.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for money due to the state of any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I'm qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and?
I'm qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia, and?
I shall support the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
I shall support the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
Further, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I shall?
Further, I do solemnly swear or affirm that I shall?
Faithfully perform the duties of a Recreation Board Member.
Faithfully perform the duties of a Recreation Board Member.
Regularly attend meetings.
Regularly attend meetings.
Uphold the ideals of community and service.
Uphold the ideals of community and service.
Act and conduct business in accordance with the city's code of ethics and conduct.
Act and conduct business in accordance with the city's code of ethics and conduct, and?
Support the charter and laws of the City of Alpharetta.
Support the charters and laws of the City of Alpharetta.
So sworn this third day of November, 2025.
So sworn this third day of November, 2025.
Congratulations, sir. Welcome aboard.
Consent agenda consists of the City Council meeting minutes from the meeting of October 27, 2025, and the financial management report for the month ending September 30, 2025. Is there anyone on council that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
Not for this item, sir.
However, if anyone wanted to come forward and speak up about this item, now's your chance to do so. I do not see anyone coming forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Hypes, a second by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So the next item on our agenda will be the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And the first public hearing will be the ordinance for the massage and spa establishment text amendments. This is the first reading, so I'll ask City Attorney Molly S. Wine to please read the ordinance title and then present the item.
An ordinance by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, amending Article 9 of Chapter 10 of the Code of the City of Alpharetta to amend regulations regarding massage establishments and spa establishments to repeal conflicting ordinances and further purposes. So I imagine you all will recall that you considered some amendments to the massage and spa establishment ordinance earlier this year. Purpose of those revisions were to allow us to fingerprint applicants as part of the background process for the issuance of massage and spa establishment licenses under our ordinance. The way that that works is we actually have to get a unique ORI from the Georgia Crime Information Center, which is authorized by the FBI. And the FBI, as part of that, and under public laws at the federal level, require review of ordinances. But what they won't do is review draft ordinances. And so the GBI serves to kind of work with local governments to spot-check and give model language for what they are looking for, which is what we had presented to you earlier this year. And as the GBI was going through and reviewing our ordinance for submission to the FBI, they said, oh, actually, we have some updated recommendations for you, which is why we're here before you today. And so the feedback, and I actually spoke with the GBI representative that gave us that feedback and working with staff, is based on other ordinances that the FBI has been questioning and maybe being a little bit more restrictive on than what we've seen in other ordinances where we actually require fingerprinting, both at the Alpharetta level and other local jurisdictions. So they wanted, because we require all of the individuals who are applying to meet the requirements for an application, meaning the corporate actors, right? When we request, or when a limited liability company is applying, we request that the members all sign the application and meet the requirements. When it's a partnership, we require all the partners to meet the requirements and to sign the application. And that was one of the main things that the FBI had given feedback to on another city with a very similar ordinance, which is the basis for the changes. So they wanted those terms, though we have general understanding of what those are, defined in our ordinance. So all of those corporate-type terms are more fleshed out now. They didn't actually have definitions, so I've added those in. So you'll see the majority of the changes are actually to add definitions for things like limited liability company, member, partner, partnership, things like that. And then in the section that provides for the submission of an application and who has to meet the criteria, where it talks about how, if it's a corporation, then it has to be the shareholders. If it's an LLC, it has to be the members. I fleshed that out a little bit more just to give that clarity that I think the FBI is looking for. And then we otherwise used the opportunity to tighten up a few things that they'd given us feedback on. They didn't like any license, and so I actually said, any license for a massage and spa establishment were under this article. They just didn't like the reference to any license. And then also fixed a typographical layer, and that's the extent of the changes.
Thank you, Ms. S. Wine. Does anyone have any questions about this? Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not for this item.
However, if there is anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this matter, now is your chance to do so. I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion this evening to approve the first reading of the ordinance for massage and spa establishment text amendment as presented by Ms. S. Wine this evening.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor of the item, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. And it does pass unanimously. So we'll move on to the next item, which is PH-25-17 North Point Development Plan and Tax Allocation District. Director Cook.
Mayor and council, just a reminder, staff retain bleakly advisory group to assist the city in evaluating opportunities that could result from creating a tax allocation district for the North Point area. The creation of a tax allocation district dedicates future taxes of, over and above the current tax base for a set period, to cover the costs of a variety of development activities within the district. And as you know, cities and counties across the country are using several different tools, including TADS, to assist with redevelopment projects for commercial corridors. And we actually had a workshop with this in the last couple of months. So tonight, Gary will go through the redevelopment plan, and this will not be for a vote, this is for discussion and public comment. So this is the public hearing. I'll turn it over to Gary.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. I was here back in September, and at that time communicated what we were working on with staff in terms of ideas for the tax allocation district. Since that time, we've completed a draft redevelopment plan, which I believe you've had in your possession for a few days anyway. And very little has changed since the last meeting. And I'm just here to kind of summarize what's in the report for the benefit of anyone that's interested in the public. I'm going to have to refer to the screen, if you don't mind. If you can go down like two, next slide. Anyway, Kathy has explained about the redevelopment powers law. I won't get into that, other than to say that the City Council was authorized way back in 2006 to exercise redevelopment powers. Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. So this has been on the books for a long time, and it's one of several tools that are available to Georgia communities for redevelopment purposes. The next slide should have the states, the process of setting up one of these things. It's a several-step process, and we have done all the data collection analysis and drafting part. This is the first required, it's the only required, public hearing under the statute. And from that point, your next steps will be to vote on a resolution to adopt a district, to make sure that the district gets certified by the end of the year in terms of its base value. And then the fun stuff happens with negotiations with the county and school district to see under what terms, if any, they agree to participate. And if they do, and you're able to negotiate agreements with them, you'll know the rules of the road and could negotiate development agreements with individual applicants. So that's the process and where we are. If you could go to the next slide. This just summarizes the contents of the redevelopment plan, and I'll be talking about the major bullet points. But basically, the plan follows the requirements of the statute. And that's the way it's written, the way it is, and it just goes down the list of all the requirements in the statute to make sure that the plan qualifies and the district qualifies. The next slide should be the boundaries of the district. We went through a long process with staff, looking at all kinds of different options and alternatives for rightsizing this district, ended up coming up with boundaries that were very similar to TAD number two, which looked at North Point several years ago. But basically, the TAD consists of 150 parcels, including some tax-exempt property owned by the city and the school district. It includes nine parcels that together make up the North Point Mall. There's about $48 million in tax digests associated with the mall, but the district in total encompasses about 646 acres, has a current 2025 digest of just under $265 million, which again is smaller than it was when we proposed TAD 2. And it's about 2.8% of the city's gross digest of $9.4 billion, which just kind of blows me away. So it's a relatively small percentage of your total tax digest. It's well under 1% of the county and school district digest. It's like 2/10 of 1%. Next slide. The main purpose of the redevelopment plan is just to establish why this TAD qualifies, why the redevelopment area qualifies under the statute. There's a whole laundry list of definitions and terms in the law, and a district has to meet some of these definitions to qualify. And in the case of Alpharetta, the TAD qualifies on the basis of inadequate infrastructure, which is not only confined to what exists today, I think it's arguable, can be argued, that there is adequate infrastructure to support current land uses that were there. But there's a key phrase that says, "and after redevelopment." And given the city's vision for this area, the existing infrastructure is not sufficient to support this area's transition to a predominantly mixed-use area as articulated in your comp plan. And these are some of the ways in green as to how the infrastructure is inadequate, basically because it doesn't provide enough pedestrian amenities. This area is currently an auto-centric retail area. The city's goal is to transition it to mixed use, and it doesn't have enough amenities to support the kind of population that the area can physically support in terms of the amount of acreage. So short of it, it qualifies on that basis. And also, this part of Alpharetta exhibits much higher retail and office vacancy than the city as a whole. So the North Point Mall and some of the office development there also meets the definition of a deteriorating area, as defined in the statute, which is different than a depressed area. Nobody's suggesting it's blighted, but it does qualify under that definition of a distressed area. The next slide kind of gets to some of that, which we shared last time. The reality is the market value of the nine parcels which make up the North Point Mall have fallen by an astounding $97 million since 2019. Over that period, your tax base as a city has increased by 75% in six years. Again, it's kind of a remarkable rate of increase. So while the city's tax base is growing by 75%, the mall has lost 50% of its value, which means that if you look at combined property taxes paid to all the taxing jurisdictions out of those 90-something acres, it's about $1.9 million less than it was in 2018. And this is 94 acres of what should be the most valuable property in all of Alpharetta. So I mean, it's clearly an opportunity lost, which, again, the city's recognized for 20-something years and has been working diligently to realize the full potential of that area. If you go to the next slide, the vision and goal of the redevelopment plan is basically to implement all of the studies that have been done for this area dating back to 2007, starting with the original Livable Cities Initiative Plan, which was updated again in 2017, and then two subsequent studies to that, which really looked at implementation of the LCI plan, the Creative Placemaking Plan that was done in 2018, 2019, and the North Point Development Framework that was completed earlier this year. So this TAD is basically a tool that will give you one more resource to help implement these longstanding community visions, which I think have been supported by multiple city councils and reaffirmed in study after study, including your latest comprehensive plan. So it's entirely consistent with your future land use policies in your current zone. If you can go to the next slide. So one of the challenges we have in this plan is we sort of know that a plan is coming for reuse of the mall. We don't know what that plan is. We don't have an actual proposal. So basically, we had to put one together that's conceptual. I can't say that this plan fits within the footprint of those 94 acres. And we looked at two things to backtrack. One was the mall site itself, and then everything else inside the TAD. So there's kind of two areas we looked at projects. So this first slide addresses the mall, which has a current market value of about $120 million, just the real estate value. We believe, based on, you know, the physical capacity of those 94 acres, to support redevelopment. The report, we looked at, again, relying in part on research by staff, we looked at nine or 10 different mall redevelopment projects across the country, and we believe that this project could be one of the largest in the United States, based on the amount of acreage and the location. And we believe that conservatively, it could support a total value, full market value, of close to $1.9 billion with a B when it's built out. It'd probably take 15 years to get there, and that's entirely dependent on, you know, the specifics of the actual proposal you get. Is there an anchor associated with this? Is it primarily residential? Is it something more akin to the Battery Atlanta? Again, at this point, we don't know. But clearly, based on what other mall redevelopment projects have looked like, in many cases, less desirable locations, there is definitely a potential to create almost $2 billion in value on that site, which is a digest of about $750 million in terms of tax digest. Then in addition to that, if you go to the next slide, there are other projects ongoing in the TAD. There's three that we know about, they've been permitted, they're actually even under construction, at least some of them. And we believe that, you know, these projects would add additional value. This slide shows the total amount of development we think the TAD can support, which would total somewhere around 2,600 housing units and almost 3 million square feet of commercial space, including retail hotels, office, and mixed-use development. The mall itself, we're looking at about 2,000 units, housing units of which about 550 we're kind of projecting would be for-sale units in multifamily buildings, condominiums, and the rest, about 1,400 units, apartment units, potentially, over a long timeline to 2040. It's a 10- to 15-year build-out. This is a requirement of the redevelopment plan that you do all this, by the way. Again, they're forecasts. Forecasts can be accurate, they can be off. It does not preclude you from approving, negotiating something else. This is just the best-case analysis and forecast at this point in time. So the bottom line is, we believe the tax digest within the entire tax allocation district could increase by 400% between now and 2040. The next slide kind of looks at, you know, what that would mean in terms of potential income to a TAD fund, assuming the county and school district participate. The law requires that you do this kind of forecast, and the instructions are to assume kind of, you know, best-case from the applicant's perspective in terms of maximum participation over a maximum number of years. So again, you know, we believe that the gross digest, as I said, could increase by, you know, 1.4, to 1.4 billion, which is an incremental growth of a little over a billion one. The graph shows, you know, the phasing of that increment over a maximum 30-year period. The next slide converts that to revenues. And again, assuming, you know, maximum participation over a maximum number of years, which we all know is not going to be reality, but this TAD potentially could generate $950 million in revenue over that period, which translates to, okay, what can you do with $950 million in revenue over 30 years? Translates to a maximum of about $380 million in the principal portion of one or more future bond issues. So again, in the scheme of redevelopment plans and TADs I've worked on, this is like as big as it gets in terms of potential. And potential is not actionable. These projects are obviously influenced by a number of variables, including what is the actual plan that you're going to be presented with in the next year or so? What does the county and school district say about this? Whether you'd have to reimburse some of that increment back to them in terms of, in the form of payments in lieu of taxes? Whole number of variables affect that. Next slide translates what is realistic in terms of funds that could be provided to potential applicants. And basically, this represents the principal portion of future bond issues, and this table assumes that somewhere between 60% and 80% of the maximum potential could be invested in redevelopment projects. And there's And there's basically, you know, three categories of potential spending with a low-to-high range, which we put in three buckets. One is North Point Mall redevelopment incentives. And that would just be, you know, any number of things that could be requested and invested inside the boundaries of a redevelopment for the North Point Mall. Could be infrastructure, could be demolition, could be public amenities, could be any number of things that would support that project. The second bucket is transportation and infrastructure improvements. Some of those could be inside the boundaries or intended to support the redevelopment mall. Some could be outside of the boundaries of the mall, just to support the general development of the district in general. And that's another 20 to 33 million, and it's fairly consistent with the numbers that were reported back in the 2017 LCI study. And then the final bucket is streetscapes, public amenities, placemaking, types of things that could be used to support not only the mall, but other types of mixed-use developments within the district as opportunities arrive over time. So, again, this is just kind of a general guideline, you know, based on a coherent strategy for the entire redevelopment plan, is to not commit the city council or future councils from spending that money in that precise way, and you can't even begin to negotiate development agreements, again, until you know what, under what terms are the county and school district participating, if any. And once all that's done, then we can start, you know, talking about specific development Next slide. It's a requirement of the statute to include a school district impact analysis. And this TAD basically covers two attendant zones, so six different schools could be potentially impacted by enrollment increases in the area. We believe the school impacts should be pretty low because of the nature of the development, with most of the units inside the redevelopment, redeveloped mall site, highly, you know, dense, mixed-use district, not a lot of, you know, no single-family homes, not many townhomes. There should be very few schoolchildren associated with that. So, basically, we came up with a total population impact of about 4,500 people in total, of which just under 200 could be expected to be school-aged children, not all of which would attend Fulton County schools. So, we have an estimate of about 188 students, generated over a 15-year period, at a time where, you know, school population per household is decreasing rapidly. So, whether those schools continue to grow over that interim period or not, we haven't gotten into in detail. But the school enrollment impact should be fairly minor. So, there should be ways to compensate the school district for increased per pupil, you know, school costs, and provide school district increment for redevelopment purposes, which will generate sales tax revenue for the district in order of magnitude at least 10 times more than what they're giving up in terms of property taxes. So, that's the report. That's what's in the plan. Makes great bedtime reading if you're an insomniac. So, there's a lot of detail in the report. So, if any of you have questions, or the public has questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do we have any questions at this point? Councilman Dorito.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask our finance director, Tom, a question or two?
Yes, sir.
I might kind of understand the, if this TAD gets put in place, and let's say we negotiate well with the county and the school board and everything that's been kind of outlined here, kind of in a, kind of a wishful perspective, because you have to go through all those negotiations. Let's assume all this falls into place as presented. The amount of incremental financing available for the different infrastructure improvements or parking decks, whatever, whatever we decide to kind of invest in, to attract investment in the North Point corridor, are we able to, explain to me how the bonds would work on that? Because we'd have to actually lay out the money upfront, right? And then, the incremental financing pays off the bonds over so many years, would be 15, 25 years? Is that correct?
It could be. There could be cases where, depending on what kind of project we're looking at and estimating to go there, there may, there could just be that you make payments to them over time, over a period of time, and you may not need to have it all financed or some significant financing out of the box. But it is quite possible you would have something. You could have both. You could have where you have to come out right away. If you did that, then you'd have to look at a lot of the numbers that he used tonight. If you notice, had a 6% NPV, net present value estimate, and we borrow much cheaper than 6% theoretically, if it's backed by the city. But that could be because you got to borrow interest in the early years and everything else. So, there are ways to finance things and only pay interest payments early on. It was going to bring down the present value of the amount you're going to be able to fund, and also just you may have to come up with other revenue sources, depending on what's going to take place in that project. It's all sort of open, depending on what you're trying to build there.
What do we typically see in TADs? Is it, is it like?
It will, it does normally take years to be able to generate, and as he mentioned, it takes 10 to 15 years for it to be built out. But there are tranches you could do. What I mean by that is do small borrowings at first, and then it starts generating itself and paying.
Do you typically see bonds?
Yes. You could, you could see.
That's the general practice by most municipalities.
There'll be some portion that would most likely be bonds. He gave you the full number theoretically what could be bonded over that period of time. We just have to see the actual numbers, you know, as we build forward. You know, and it, you know, the actual structure will just depend on what you're trying, what you're trying to effectuate in that area, whether there needs to be a big, you know, acquisition of land or a large public improvement that we have to come out of the box with, and then how we'd structure that is all going to be determined. You could do these bonds as TAD bonds. If the revenues are starting to generate, they may not come out with no bond rating or a very low bond rating, so the interest rate will be higher, like, you know, towards 6%. Or it could be backed by the city in certain methods.
For the record, so people watching or people in the audience here understand, the financing, whether it be of the bonds or we pay as we go, you know, finance it through the developers, whoever come in to make the improvements to the North Point Mall area, it comes out of the incremental increase in the value of the TAD.
Of the area.
Of the area. So, there's no, there's no direct impact on existing taxpayers. This would come out of the incremental portion of the increase in value of the land.
Especially as you get ready to issue those bonds, that's what our goal would be, to protect that nothing is, that you don't bond too much, and you have the stream coming from these numbers, and you're conservatively knowing they're coming in to cover that bond so that the public would not be out on anything other than the increment.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that helps.
Thanks. That helps a lot.
Any other questions?
Tom? You want Tom? No, not for Tom.
No, I just, are you finished?
Right now, yeah.
Councilman Mitchell.
All right. Thank you. Tom, I do have, and I do appreciate your presentation, sir. It's exciting to know that we could have one of the most, the largest redevelopment projects in the country if we, if we followed through correctly. I'd like you to compare this proposal with what we did with Avalon and that bonding that we did. Is it, is it still on the conservative side?
Well, we're not at the stage yet with the Avalon.
Right.
Did the convention center deal with, with the hotel taxes and stuff like this. This will be from an increment perspective, and obviously, when we get ready to do any financings, then these numbers, these projections, after our negotiations with the city, I mean, with the county and the school board, we will, again, be as conservative as we can, just like that arrangement where there's no impact to the general fund other than, and only an impact to the TAD increment, but no impact to the general fund. That's how we would go forward. Right now, it's, it's just numbers saying what the capacity could be, but ultimately, it probably could be, you know, significantly lower number than this if you want to stay real conservative on what you could finance. But hopefully, again, that answers it. There's just so many different ways in which this thing can go, so.
Our finance report has our commercial base now at 51%. Dropped from 60% and residential tax base is at 49%. And it used to be at 40%. Projects like this and other development projects that are commercial will help the city to regain that higher commercial tax base, like we once held.
Correct.
And we have a lot more residential, and that's growing. But, but we still need to supplement with the commercial tax base. Is that correct?
Well, it's twofold, I guess, or another way to look at it is, we have to do something with the mall out there. That's obviously, because it just continues, I think, some of the numbers he mentioned on how much it has declined. When we had that TAD II, I think we were about $180 million was the digest number for that TAD II, and this is at $160, whatever it is, $160 million. And it's down because of that mall just continued to drop in value. So, something has to be done, and obviously, it's going to be the commercial piece of that that's going to build that back up for our general fund as well, but.
Yeah. It's disturbing when you look at what the North Point Mall used to be and what it is today. It's disturbing, even though, from all practical appearances, it seems as though it's still thriving on the outside, but when you walk in the mall, you're like, there's so much potential there of what this whole 95 acres could be. So, I appreciate the presentation tonight. It's very enlightening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen? Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this?
We do not.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, now's your chance to do so. See no one coming forward, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes. Excuse me. Sorry about that, folks. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, to offer a motion this evening to approve PH-25-17 North Point Development Plan and Tax Allocation District, which is a redevelopment plan to create a tax allocation district III, Alfreda North Point Activities Center.
Second? I have a motion by Mayor Proton and Merkel. Second.
I have a question. Is this a voting item?
I actually was getting on the mic to say, I don't think we need a vote tonight. We, as part of the process, you have a public hearing, and then there will be a resolution on, that I'll read when y'all go to adopt that, that is advertised separately. So, there's, and it's not an ordinance, so it doesn't require a first read. I apologize for not catching that sooner.
Withdraw the motion?
I withdraw the second.
And I'll change my agenda, which says motion and vote.
Can we? Mayor, with that, can we have comments for a few minutes? If we can't, can we discuss what was presented, or no?
If you'll ask Tom a question, who might have an opportunity?
I bothered Tom enough tonight. No, I'm fine. I'll wait till the actual hearing.
Okay. So, that'll wrap up the discussion about that. We'll move on to new business. First item under new business is the task order for the fiscal year 2026 stormwater pipelining. Director Sucevich.
Mayor, council is one of those exciting task orders of, for lining our corrigamental pipes that are three feet and greater in diameter. It's an on-call vendor that we have, UAM. They're in their fourth year of their five-year contract, and we compare their pricing with everybody else as it comes through, and you pick out the unit prices, they'll come in at $614,870.55, and this will line approximately 2,300 linear feet of pipe. Any questions?
Thank you, Director. Do we have any questions for Mr. Sucevich? Councilman Hite.
Yeah, Director Pete, I've been trying to keep track of our bigger capital items and the cost and how much we can do. So, 2,300 feet, $600,000. Looks to me like it's $600,000 per half-mile, roughly. How are we comparing? Are we, how many fewer feet are we being able to do per dollar as the years have gone by? How much do we need to increase our capital toward these projects to stay at the same rate we did before? I don't care which way we go.
This is what's been nice with this vendor. They've been holding their pricing for us for the last couple of years.
Okay.
So, right now, we're sitting pretty, the same as we were last year. So, we have not seen an increase. When we come up for the renewal in another couple of years, that's when we'll start getting the pricing and figure out what we have to do to maintain that status quo.
Any way to project, you know, by time of retreat or some, sometime in advance of that contract coming forward, whether or not we're going to get hit with a significant price increase, or whether maybe prices will go down, for all I know?
We'll look into that. We'll check by the retreat.
Yeah, I would be interested. I know it's not this matter here, but I'm very interested on these bigger capital items, how much we can do per dollar, per foot, and how we compare in the past. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Director Sucevich? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not have any for this item, sir.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak about this item, now's your chance to do so. Don't see any public coming forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor. Move to approve a task order for the ward of funds in the amount not to exceed $614,870.55 to Utility Asset Management, Inc., for stormwater pipelining throughout the city pursuant to the August 18, 2021 on-call storm pipelining services contract, binding between Utility Asset Management, Inc. and the City of Alpharetta, and authorize them to execute all necessary documents.
Second? I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, and a second by Councilman Mitchell. Any discussion on this item? Don't see any discussion on this item. We'll call for a motion.
You got a motion to help a vote?
Oh, my apologies.
Mr. Mayor, could you repeat the second as well?
Pardon?
I know Doug Dorito seconded, but, or made the motion.
Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay. All those in favor of the motion? Please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Pete. So, the next item up on our agenda is the franchise agreement for Google Fiber. Is that swine?
I think Tom is coming to the podium, so he'll be the star of the show, but I'll get it started, so.
He's pretty slow. You might want to go ahead.
We have a consultant through GMA, I believe, with local government services, who has worked to negotiate a franchise fee agreement with us. This is following that same form that has actually been approved in several other jurisdictions in the metro area. I don't know when Milton is actually reviewing it, but they had one kind of going through their hopper at about the same time, and it's been adopted in other areas. Provides for a 2% franchise fee, which is what has been approved in the other jurisdictions. So, Tom can speak more to that and the specifics, but I think that's a good bit of it.
Thank you for clarifying.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think Molly summarized it pretty well. This is a non-exclusive franchise agreement between City of Alpharetta and Google Fiber for the installation of network facilities, et cetera, in our right-of-way. As she mentioned, this was negotiated, is a very similar agreement that's been done in Smyrna and throughout, throughout Georgia, that Google has come forward and said, this is what we'd like to do. And we used our consultant, again, through GMA, to quote-unquote beat it up and just get it where it needs to be. And ultimately, as she mentioned, the due compensation for the use of our right-of-way is 2% of their gross sales to a retail customer, and under the state law, it would only need to be 5 cents per, I think, linear, linear foot. And this will come out, should come out much greater than what they'd be required to under state law. But they're coming forward in good faith and saying, we'd
But they're coming forward in good faith and saying, we'd like to have these individually with municipalities, and the due compensation will be, should exceed what we would, what they would be required to pay under the minimum under the state law. So Jess George from Google is here from Google Fiber, if you have any questions.
Councilman Hypes?
Yeah, I'd appreciate it if the Google representative could come up.
Thank you for having me.
And your name is?
I'm Jess George. I lead Government and Community Affairs for Google Fiber in the East.
Fantastic. Very nice to meet you. I'm, I know we're going to vote on this. I'm excited about offering our residents an alternative, so when we complain about one service, we can go to another service, and then another service, and then another service, and then circle back. And so it's great to have more options in town, but I wanted to have you come up here. Will there be somebody with Google in the actual implementation that we, as a city, have a person with a dedicated line that we can speak to when issues come up? Because the residents I speak to have construction fatigue.
Absolutely.
We've had Highway Nine under construction for a decade, it feels like, probably is accurate. You know, we just got done with Rucker Road. Webb Bridge Road is underway. There may be construction on Old Milton Parkway, and God knows, four hundred's coming. So no sooner did we get something done than the orange marks go along the side of the road identifying where the lines are, and trenching starts again.
Absolutely.
And when that happens, sometimes, it's been my experience, and I'm going to call you Jess, I didn't pick up your last one.
Absolutely, please do.
That there's finger pointing between vendors. And what I want to know is, can you commit? Can we amend the contract or something that we have a person, that there's no finger pointing? When we have issues about implementation, that we can say, this needs to get fixed? I attend a church right up here on North Main Street, and there was so much finger pointing going amongst all the different vendors putting things in, we couldn't get a straight answer hardly ever. And I'm very sensitive to this. So is that is that something can be done, or is that just like, yeah, whatever?
I really appreciate the question and the experience that you all have had as council members representing your districts and your responsibilities and that of the staff to be good stewards of the community of the right-of-way and make sure that your residents are fairly represented and that we don't spend a lot of time not resolving issues that need to be resolved immediately. To answer your question directly, we absolutely have dedicated Google Fiber full-time employee staff members who will be the primary point of contact. So not vendors, not subcontractors, but Google Fiber full-time employees, myself included. And so I will make myself available to any council member who has a question or concern from a resident. Just to add a little bit more detail, the things that we're super proud of, we have a twenty-four-seven hotline answered by a real, live human anytime anyone has a concern, whether it's, who's doing construction in my street? Why isn't this resolved? Someone dug up my begonias. Wait, you came in at February, and you dug something up, and I need you to add sod. Will you come back in May and do that? We track every single ticket to resolution. And so we're really proud of the resolution that we have for any any concerned resident, any concerned council member. And I also want to add that it is really important to us to make sure that we are taking full responsibility of all of our actions in the right-of-way.
I appreciate that.
As well as that of our vendors and our subcontractors. We want all of those issues to be resolved immediately, and we know that construction fatigue is so real for communities. So one of the things that we will do in Alfreda is to work really closely with city staff to ensure that if there's a community that just had some construction, we'll pause there and we'll wait and give that community a break to make sure that we're not coming right behind some other infrastructure upgrade project. All of these things are super important to us. The two percent that we'll be remitting back to the city is two percent that we are really motivated to get more and more customers. That's in our best interest. It's in the best interest of the city. So we want to be extraordinarily good partners at every single level, and it's in our best interest to make sure that your residents have the best possible construction experience that we can give them, because we want them to sign up for our service. And so we really are committed to, we will leave your community better than the way we found it.
Well, that is a great answer, a sincere answer. And if, you know, for reasons unknown, you move on to another company sometime in the future, we got a great video record of what just happened.
Perfect, absolutely. We'll be accountable for this. Sounds good.
Counselman Mitchell?
Thank you for being here, Jess. The two percent, what kind of projected revenues are you are you seeing for the city? Surely you have something in your mind.
That is a very fair question and one I wish I could answer, but my attorneys always tell me that we don't offer those kind of projections because we don't give customer accounts. So I don't have that information, but I feel very confident about our anticipated penetration rates and our ability to remit that percentage back to the city. So unfortunately, I don't have a number for you.
Tom, what did that mean?
You do the same answer I give you guys.
Yeah, exactly. It sounds so familiar. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Councilman Dorito?
Jess, good question. Thanks for being here. Do you have like a construction plan already, or is this waiting to get this agreement in place before you decide where you start tearing up the the roadways and stuff?
We do not have our high-level design done yet. This is the first step. And then, once we do that, we'll develop the high-level design. We'll bring it back to the city for feedback. That's based primarily on where our hut sites are, so how we're connecting it to the backbone in the area. But we'll make sure that we get city staff input, making sure that we are collaborating with any kind of open trench opportunities, or making sure that we are not in any way getting involved with road refinishing or those other issues that we can come in conflict with. So don't have a plan just yet. I will say that it's my understanding that Google Fiber would like to build as much of Alfreda as possible.
Are you doing work in the surrounding communities?
Yeah, our goal is to serve the many communities surrounding Alfreda.
Are you already installing the fiber in surrounding communities?
No, we'll be designing the whole area collectively, and so we have a good sequence of construction that makes sense for everybody.
How do you select the, I guess, the initial area of impact?
In this region or just in general?
In Alfreda, for example. Like, what, how do you pick where you start putting the fiber out there?
It's typically engineering motivated, so we're looking for where we have our hut sites, the places where we have our largest points of infrastructure, and we build out from there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions?
I'll still be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and talk about Google Fiber, now's your chance. Don't see anyone come forward, so we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council on this item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion tonight to approve the franchise agreement with Google Fiber as presented this evening.
Second? I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and a second by Councilman Hypes. Any discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please vote yes. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up that portion of our agenda this evening. Now's the opportunity for public comment. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a few public comment cards this evening. I'm just going to start at the top. Our first speaker, I apologize if I mispronounced your name, but I think it's Divyaraj Singh. Next is Anita Katta.
So you have three minutes, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, respected council members, and distinguished guests, namaste. My name is Anita Katta, a proud resident of the city of Alfreda. The month of October is special and meaningful for Hindus around the world, as it is also when we celebrate Diwali, the festival of lights. Diwali is more than just a celebration. It is a time to reflect on how light trims over darkness, knowledge over ignorance, and hope over despair. It encourages us to uphold our values, act with honesty, and promote peace within our families and communities. I am also a volunteer for a Hindu community service project, Seva Diwali. It promotes Hindu values, community spirit, and service. We uphold the idea of Vasudhayeva Kutumbakam, meaning the whole world is one family. We believe in service to humanity is service to divinity. Selfless service or Seva is at the heart of our celebrations and daily life. During Diwali, we focus on this special national project called Seva Diwali. Seva Diwali brings together thousands of volunteers from all over the country, coordinated by HSS, Hindu Swamsevak Sangha. The project invites people to use their home as collection points for canned foods, non-perishable items, and other supplies. These donations go to local food banks and homeless shelters, so the spirit of Diwali and giving reaches those who need it most. In 2024, Seva Diwali made a big difference. About three thousand volunteers across the nation collected and distributed over seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand pounds of food and supplies in thirty-eight states and more than two hundred cities. Being the seventh consecutive year for the event, it involved two-hundred-and-forty-seven organizations, including Hindu, Jain, Buddhist, and Sikh temples, schools, and community groups. In 2024, from Alfreda City, over two thousand pounds, and from Georgia, over fourteen-thousand-five-hundred pounds of food and supplies were collected and distributed about to ten various food banks, shelters, and Section Eight families. This year, 2025, Seva Diwali Food Drive in our area has started, working to collect and distribute food items during the months of October and November. We take this opportunity to kindly request your guidance and assistance in identifying and helping more local food banks and shelters that can benefit from our Seva Diwali Food Drive. Your support will help us ensure that our efforts are as inclusive and far-reaching as possible. As we celebrate Diwali, we wish to share its light and hope with all residents of the city of Alfreda. We believe that every individual, regardless of background or faith, deserves to be uplifted and respected. I am grateful to the city of Alfreda for considering this initiative, and we, the volunteers of Seva Diwali, look forward to contributing to serve and support our diverse, growing community. Thank you, and namaste.
Thank you. Look forward to the event.
Our next speaker, I have Sriyam Nene.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, and members of City Council, and namaste. So I haven't, don't have prepared speech, but I'm also trying to highlight the various contributions that Hindu Swamsevak Sangha, which I'm a volunteer of, has made in several places in Alfreda, Georgia, and nationwide. So I was actually in charge of an exhibition called Darshana, which highlights and educates various people about the Hindu culture, cultural values, and in general, the contribution of Hindus and Indians to the world in various, various areas and aspects. I was very happy to note that one of the first exhibitions that we did in Georgia was done in Alfreda, and I thanked the mayor and the council members to support it wholeheartedly. And it basically explains the different contributions that were made by Hindus in the past several thousand years. The other initiative I want to talk about is also called Guru Vandana. This initiative has been a part and parcel of Hindu Swamsevak Sangha since its its birth, I guess. And in Hinduism, gurus are, or teachers are revered the most. They are almost equated to the god, et cetera. So for Hindus, mother and father are also equated to God, and after mother and father, we say the gurus or the teachers are the most important people equated to God. In the month of May, where there is a National Teachers Appreciation Week in the whole country, we also invite teachers, actually, our kids invite teachers to our centers, and then we do a ceremony honoring these teachers. And many of the teachers have expressed their gratitude and their feelings that, emotions that they could not even contain sometimes, and through tea, they appreciated this initiative. So this, this initiative, the Guru Vandana, basically teaches our kids and that gurus and teachers are to be respected, and it's just not respect because they teach us, but because the values they inculcate on us. And that is the only way to, you know, repay those things are just by honoring them and being humble and being, showing the humility towards them and showing their love towards them. So these initiatives are also part of, among others, a part of Hindu Swamsevak Sangha, which is a nonprofit organization. I think the previous speaker, Anitaji, she spoke about the Seva Diwali Drive. Along with that, these two initiatives also speak volumes about our commitment and our approach to the society. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Supraha Jais. And then, if you want to go ahead and come down, it's Radhika Suda after that.
Namaste, and hello to Mayor Gilvin, esteemed City Council members, and all present here. My name is Supraha Jais. I'm a volunteer of Hindu Swamsevak Sangha, USA. HSS is a federally registered IRS-recognized 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has served communities across this country for nearly four decades. I live, raise my family, work, and have have called Georgia my home for more than twenty-five years. I would like to take this opportunity to thank and appreciate Mayor, Honorable Mayor Gilvin, for your consistent support to our organization, where you have personally visited many of our events, including the Darshana that was mentioned by Mr. Sriyam Nene, and also to our last year Seva Diwali conclusion concluding event in Alfreda. And you have also given proclamations, witnessed the good work we have done and the ways in which we have contributed to the society we live in. Every year, Hindus celebrate the holiday, Hindu holiday called Raksha Bandhan, traditionally a festival celebrating the bond between a brother and a sister. Since 2004, HSS has celebrated this holiday as Universal Oneness Day, broadening its scope from the family to the community, thereby practicing the Hindu value Vasudhayeva Kutumbakam, meaning the whole world is one family. HSS volunteers have met with the civic leaders, public safety officers in Alfreda City, and celebrated this holiday by tying rakis, a saffron bracelet symbolic of mutual protection, to reaffirm our social and civic responsibilities. It was a great honor for HSS volunteers to have personally met you, Mr. Honorable Mayor Gilvin, and a few other office staff, and tie the raki to seek your protection and in turn wishing for your good health and prosperity. For the past four years, I have participated in Interfaith Atlanta Festival as a part of HSS. HSS volunteers have shared this message of universal oneness at the Interfaith Atlanta Festival by tying rakis to people from all faiths, races, and nationalities, and of all ages and all genders, with the simple idea that we should all love and protect each other to promote communal harmony and togetherness. Despite our numerous efforts that benefit our communities, there are antagonists of our Hindu-American core values attacking us at every angle. I am deeply insulted to learn that a particular non-Georgian named Peter Frederick has been traveling to Georgia city councils, trying to divide this vibrant, diverse society that I call home by spewing lies and hatred against me and my fellow Hindus, especially of HSS. In this very council, he recently made outrageous and slanderous claims that HSS undermines American pluralism and spreads hate against Muslims, Sikhs, and other minority groups within American society. The Universal Oneness Day that we celebrate and value completely refutes this. These accusations are dangerous. These accusations are dangerous and create Hindu phobia in the minds of my coworkers, my neighbors, friends, and loved ones with whom I have lived as a proud Hindu. I am now scared by the rising hate crime that we see in the nation. You must be aware of a recent beheading of a Hindu man in front of his family in Dallas, Texas. I urge my elected officials to take action against such hate propaganda in order to protect good Hindu civilians. I do not want myself or my family to hide our identity or to be discriminated against, but rather be proud of who we are, where we come from, and exercise my right to practice freedom of religion. Thank you. And I sincerely appreciate your consistent support, Mayor Gilvin.
You're very welcome.
Greetings, council member. I'm so glad. I've been seeing you all paying so much attention to different accent and still able to grasp everything that we are saying. Thank you so much. We have not put you to sleep. I'm the last among our group. You have heard so many people talk about HSS. So I will not drill down of various activities that HSS do, but I would like to point more towards Mr. Peter Frederick, about whom Supraha Jhoyis just spoke, how he is talking and who he is. So I'll just give a brief introduction. I have more than three minutes because somebody donated me their three minutes. So I'll just take little more time and not promise I won't put you to sleep. I will just talk about, I'll summarize what these people have spoken so far and more about Mr. Peter. By the way, my name is Radhika Suda. I'm resident of Alpharetta. I'll leave just five minutes from here. And I'm a great admirer of Hindu Swamvayam Sevak Sangha. In short, we'll call HSS Hindu Swamvayam Sevak Sangha, which is a federally registered IRS-recognized 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It has served communities across the United States for nearly four decades. Now, like Supraha mentioned, Peter Frederick has been traveling to city councils across Georgia, claiming that HSS is a terror outfit or US branch of extreme organization. These accusations are unfounded, defamatory, and dangerous. The reality is, HSS USA is an independent American organization governed entirely by US law. In nearly 40 years of public service, not a single case or conviction has ever linked to HSS USA. Linked to HSS USA to the hate, violence, or any illegal activities. HSS appears on no US State Department or Homeland Security or Treasury Department list of extremist or terror organization. It has never been investigated, indicted, or subject to any terrorism-related action. Its activities are civil and educational, teaching timeless values like discipline, teamwork, service, and civic responsibility. HSS program includes youth, character development, yoga sessions, blood donation drives, environmental cleanup, interfaith dialogues, and community service, initiating such as Seva Diwali, about which our first speaker, Ms. Katta, spoke about. We partner with local food banks and have been publicly commended by the elected officials from both parties. The organization regularly collaborates with Muslims, Christians, and geo-communities in interfaith service projects. It is precisely because of this culture of character building and service that young Hindu Americans have become some of the most hardworking, law-abiding, and productive citizens of this nation, doctors, teachers, engineers, and business owners who pay their taxes, volunteer locally, and contribute to the strength of American society. They take part in food drives during Thanksgiving, environmental efforts on Earth Day, and relief work during disasters, often alongside various organizations such as churches, mosques, and cinemas. To portray such an organization as anti-puralist is to misunderstand both American institutional ideal and exclusive ethos of Hindu Dharma, which HSS stands for. And to accuse a federally recognized nonprofit of terrorism without a shred of legal evidence is reckless and inconsistent with American democratic values. There is no factual or legal basis for labeling HSS or RSS as a terrorist organization. Human Rights Watch, often cited by critics, has never designated RSS as a terrorist group. Now, the scholars whom Mr. Peter referred in his speech, such as Ms. Ondee Prusak and Mr. Rohit Chopra, are entitled to their own opinion. But their remarks represent personal ideological view, not peer-reviewed research or verified evidence. In fact, Prusak's work on South Asia has been widely criticized for bias and factual inconsistencies. Academic debate does not amount to the proof of wrongdoing by HSS USA. Now, as for Mr. Peter Fryridge, he is not a recognized scholar or a policy expert on South Asian affairs. His writings are opinion-based, published primarily through advocacy platforms with a clear ideological agenda. Multiple independent researchers have documented his affiliation with foreign political lobbies and a consistent pattern of targeting Hindu organizations under the disguise of anti-fascism. Furthermore, Mr. Fryridge has misrepresented himself as a resident of Alpharetta, when public records and community members have found no evidence of his residency here. This raises further question about his credibility and motivation behind his activism. According to the reports by Z News and the investigation referenced by New Delhi Police, Mr. Fryridge has been associated with disinformation network linked to Pakistan's ISI, as documented in Disinfo Lab report titled "Unending War: From Proxy War of Info to the War Against India." That report describes him as a central figure in coordinated propaganda effort. Between 2007 and 2014, his activism did not target HSS or RSS. It targeted Mahatma Gandhi, whom the public, whom he publicly vilified, discredited status of, and called a racist and pedophile. Only after 2014, when political tides shifted, did he rebranded his campaign to attack Hindu American organizations like HSS.
Are you almost finished?
Almost done. Just one paragraph. So when a few municipalities have pressured to revisit proclamation, it was not because HSS was found guilty of any wrongdoing. It was due to coordinated lobby and selective misinformation. In cities where council members met HSS volunteers and verified their activities firsthand, proclamations have been continued and have been renewed, reflecting that organization's true record of service. Council members, I respectfully urge you to judge HSS by their work, not by the rumors spread by the individuals who profit from division, denying proclamation or partnership based on the unverified propaganda would contradict the very ideals of fairness, inclusion, and due process that city stands for. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that all of the public comment cards?
Those are all of the cards that I have. The other two I had stated that they wanted to donate their time, so I don't think they're wanting to speak. Manika Singh and Divraj Singh, no? Okay.
Okay. Well, I'll just say that I can't speak for everyone, but I think most of us learn to trust people based on their acts, not their words. And you and your organization and your part of our community have been very significantly, positively impacting many of our residents. I remember last year, Councilman Eramili showed up one day. He texted me because y'all had raised a great amount of food at an event, and he brought it to our fire station right down the street and said, "Hey, do you think, you know, it'd be okay if we came?" I was like, "Well, yeah, they're firemen. They certainly love to have food." So I appreciate your contribution. You're welcome. Thank you. So that being said, I think we do require an executive session this evening. Would someone like to come?
That's right. And just for the record, it's for cybersecurity and pending litigation.
Thank you.
Motion to recess to executive session.
Mr. Mayor, did you call for any reports?
Oh, you're right. I have not.
My apologies for that.
And we better do it now because by the time we come back from executive session, everybody will have gone to bed. God bless you. So reports, I think there's a few things going on we might want to report on.
Yeah, I just want to encourage everybody. I think it's going to be low voter turnout, so get out tomorrow and vote. It's very important for each community and throughout the state. So please take advantage of this right to vote.
Any other reports?
Yep.
Councilman Mndrida.
I'll just follow Councilman Mitchell's comments. I've obviously been in the heat of this cycle for two and a half months. And I tell you, the city of Alpharetta's got some tremendous people here on all sides. The candidates are great. The campaigns, I think, have been pretty good. But the most important thing to do, despite who you decide to vote for, if you haven't voted already in early voting, I think we had close to 6,000 early votes as of last Friday. You know, exercise your right to vote. You know, as all of you just came up here and talked about the great things you're doing and helping not only Alpharetta but around the country, it's important to exercise your right to vote because that's how people get involved. That's a key voice in your government and how we operate. And so, you know, I implore people to get out and vote tomorrow if they haven't done that already. And support the senior exemptions that are on the ballot. And I think that's an important thing for our seniors to achieve some tax reduction on school taxes. Thank you.
Councilman Hypes?
I believe we have one more meeting between now and one of our favorite events in Alpharetta. The Alpharetta Tree Lighting will be Saturday, November 22. So if you miss our next meeting, you'll have it on your calendar now. It's always a great event, great community turnout down here at the town green. So we hope to see you there Saturday, November 22.
And just because it may not be on your radar, don't forget to vote for the Public Service Commission races that are statewide, that are going to impact the economic development and our ability to pay for our light bills and our air conditioning and all of that good stuff. Because those are very critical roles. And so just wanted to make sure you didn't skip that as you're going through to vote for one of our councilmen or something like that. So please go all the way to the end of the ballot and make sure we vote. Thank you very much. That'll be all of the reports, I assume, so...
I renew my motion to recess to executive session.
We have a motion by Councilman Hypes, second by Mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor of executive session, please vote yes. And it's unanimous. We'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilman Dorito. All those in favor of reconvening, please vote yes. We are reconvened. It was unanimous. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
Councilman Dorito and Councilman Mitchell.
And I'd like to thank all the people who joined us today.
All those in favor of adjourning, let's vote yes.